Hello, good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for joining us this evening. Today is the 15th day of April 2014. While I can't call the meeting to order just yet, I am going to ask the representatives of the Board, Ms. Pat Campos and Mr. Ramiro Veliz, who are here with me this evening, to start in the presentations this evening. So with that being said, Mr. Santos, we have some recognitions.
Yes, members of the Board. You know, this is the time in the meeting, as you can see, we've got a full-packed house. This is the time that we recognize our students for their achievement, our employees. And really, on behalf of all the Board trustees, I want to thank the parents for all their efforts that they do to be able to get our students to showcase themselves, their skills, their talent. They represent their school well. I think most of all, they represent United ISD well. So if the Board members can join me up front, then we'd like to recognize students and staff.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Camarillo, on behalf of the UISD Police Department, true heroism is not the urge to surpass all others at whatever cost, but the urge to serve others at whatever cost. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce and acknowledge and recognize one or own security officers who are, you know, seen as everyday officers there in the campuses. At this time, I want to recognize one or own, whose name is Ernie J. Beltran. He's a security officer at Clark Elementary School. Officer Beltran, through his heroism, saved the lives of two students while at Clark Elementary by performing the hemlock maneuver on two occasions on the two students who were choking. So at this time, I do want to recognize Officer Beltran.
Good evening, Board members, Mr. Santos, and distinguished audience. My name is Cindy Rodriguez. I'm the Executive Director for Elementary Ed. And it is my distinct pleasure this evening to recognize our winners district-wide for our Elementary Science Fair. The UISD Science Fair is a great way for students to learn firsthand about a topic of interest while incorporating the scientific method and critical thinking skills. We are proud tonight to recognize each winner and commend them for their dedication towards excellence. And we have a small trophy for them. In third place, from Malakoff Elementary, congratulations goes out to Victoria Michelangeli for "How Sweet Is the Fruit We Eat." In second place, from Nye Elementary, Larissa Moreno, "What Sugar Do Ants Prefer?" And in first place, from Colonel Santos Benavides, Fernando Hernandez, "Magnetism: Magnetic Liquid." These students are our first to, through third grade winners in the lower grade category. We also have our fourth and fifth grade winners, which we'll call up on stage so we can take a picture with all of them together. From Trauma Elementary, we have Miss Saida Gonzalez, "How Permanent Are Permanent Markers?" Again, these are our fourth and fifth grade winners. In second place, with her project, "Which Candy Bar Is More Acidic?", we have Leah Guerra from Colonel Santos Benavides. And in first place, with the project titled "Accelerating Sublimation", from Cayzen Elementary, Albert Gonzalez. Once again, congratulations to all our Science Fair winners. We look forward to next year, parents. Our students will be presenting at their final Science Fair competition for next year. So we really look forward to that, and we encourage you all to start working on those projects. It's never too early. Congratulations, boys and girls, well done. At this time, now we would like to acknowledge the following Math B winners for their outstanding calculating skills. Their commitment and preparation for the event was clearly evident. We certainly saw some very competitive students this year. As a matter of fact, you'll see what I'm referring to in just a moment. But we're going to start off with our second grade winners. In third place, congratulations goes out to Emiliano Quiroga from Borchers Elementary. In second place, we have Natalia Rodriguez from Boni Garcia. And in first place, from our second grade division, congratulations goes out to Luis Bonillas from Colonel Santos Benavides. Congratulations. Now, from our third grade division, congratulations goes out to third-place winner Antonio Flores from Salinas Elementary. In second place, we have Pablo Gonzalez from Ruiz Elementary. And in first place, from Gutierrez Elementary, congratulations to Aliza Nais Garza. Awesome job, well done, boys and girls. Your hard work paid off. And at this time, we'd also like to invite our finalists for fourth and fifth grade. This year, all of our groups were very competitive. We really had a hard time sitting them down. Awesome job, teachers and principals. In fourth and fifth grade, we have a Part II Math B because these students were so smart, so well-prepared, that we have to bring them back for a round two. So I'd like to present to you tonight our Elite Eight. These are the students that were relentless, were very well-prepared, and are ready to compete again May 21st. Everyone's cordially invited here at the SAC, and we will have our Part II Math B. Congratulations to these awesome competitors. From Clark Elementary, we have Jason Swain from Colonel Santos Benavides, Ethan Caroma from Matías De Lano, Alejandro Rubio, from Kennedy Zapata, Samuel Villegas, from Muller Elementary, Victoria Perez, from Nye Elementary, Tanya Gonzalez, and from Ruiz Elementary, America Lopez. And I have one more winner who has a brother here, as a matter of fact, Juan Quiroga from Borchers Elementary. And his younger brother was also one of our winners. Let's give him a big round of applause. I apologize for that. And fourth and fifth graders, we look forward to seeing you May 21st. We already sent you your practice slides, so keep preparing, and good luck to all of you. Congratulations again, well done.
Good evening, members of the Board, Mr. Santos. As you know, every year we have our Science Fair. This year was the 26th Annual Regional Science Fair. And our winner for Middle School Division, the project was called "How Nicotine Affects a Cricket's Daily Activity", from Trauma Middle School, seventh-grade student Jorge de los Santos. He is the son of Jorge and Adriana de los Santos, Principal Letizia Menchaca.
Good evening, Mr. Santos, Board members, members of the audience. My name is Bobby Cruz. I'm the District Athletic Director. And it is with great pride tonight that we recognize our individuals and teams. Starting off with our first recognition, these young ladies have become a staple in the playoffs, making the playoffs four out of the last six years. And this year, they qualified again, and they finished up their season as by-district finalists. Congratulations, LBJ Lady Wolves Basketball Team. Head Coach Robert Burrier, Assistant Coaches Mike Vehil, Erica Vehil, and Ruby Charles, Principal Armando Salazar. Congratulations, Lady Wolves. Our next team that we'd like to recognize, it's very difficult to start a program, and this is what this group did. It's a very young team. It's probably in its second or third year of existence, and they've already done very well. And this year was no exception. Congratulations, LBJ Swim Team. These are your regional qualifiers. Head Coach Paul Kane, Assistant Coach Maritza Gomez. Congratulations, LBJ Swim Team Regional Qualifiers.
The next group I would like to introduce is our LBJ UIO events. I want to give a big shout-out if we can get our principals and our sponsors to come up. Recently, we had a district meet at Alexander, and the following group in news writing, editorial writing, future writing, news writing, ready writing, and science were awarded places where they're now moving on to the next regional competition at UTSA. So congratulations to our Wolves. I'll go ahead and ask the administrators to stay behind. Our next category from LBJ Skills USA. Skills USA is the events that target building workplace skills such as leadership, teamwork, citizenship, and character development. Participation in Skills USA events build and reinforce self-confidence, positive workforce attitudes, high ethical standards, superior work skills, lifelong education, and pride and dignity of work. These students received State Superior Blue Ribbon, Commercial Photography, also State Superior Blue Ribbon in Advertising Design, and Superior on Business Computer Projects. Congratulations to our students and our sponsors Jeffrey Castillo and Elena Lazzondo and the Wolf Pride Principals.
The next group that we'd like to recognize is the United South Panthers Powerlifting Team. The first group, the first group are two young men that won the state championship. Jonathan Peña won his weight division, 148-pound weight division. You can figure out who Jonathan is. Jonathan Peña won the 148-pound weight division by bench pressing 315 pounds, squatting 520 pounds, and deadlifting 500 pounds for a total of 1335. Rudy Flores. Rudy, raise your hand. Rudy. Rudy Flores is a state champion in the super heavyweight division. Squatted 840 pounds, bench pressed 530 pounds. I know. Deadlifted 665 pounds for a total of 2,035 pounds, which is a... which is a state record. Based on that performance, Rudy was then invited to the national meet, where he won the national meet as well. In addition, Rudy received an invitation to the World Powerlifting Meet next year in Hungary. At the national level, Carlos Sanchez also won his weight division. Carlos Sanchez, please raise your hand. And as a team, which you see coming up, these young men and young ladies dominated every meet they went to this year. They qualified for the regional, and they all qualified for state. Congratulations, United South Panther Powerlifting Team. Congratulations, United South Panthers Regional and State Qualifiers. Our next recognition goes to the United South Panther Boys Basketball Team for winning the 29-5A Co-District Basketball Championship. Head Coach Carmelo Gonzalez, Assistants Hector Velazquez, Tomas Rodriguez, and Reggie Lopez. Congratulations, Panther Boys Basketball District 29-5A Co-Champions. Again, our two youngest swim programs are LBJ, of course, which we recognized earlier. And walking up to the stage is the United South Panther Regional Qualifying Swim Team. Head Coach Paul Kane, Assistant Coach Maritza Gomez. Our district is comprised of our four high schools along with the Corpus Christi Ray, King &amp; Carol. And once these swimmers get out of district, they compete in Brownsville. Congratulations, United South Panther Swim Team Regional Qualifiers.
Mr. Santos and board members, I can tell you is that the chess team is back. They're back second year in national competition. Let me share some of the great news that they want to demonstrate with us today. The United South High School Chess Squad recently competed at the USCF National Chess Tournament in San Diego, California. The United South Squad competed in three divisions individually and as a team. All we can say is they came back with a national champion trophy in the 800 Division, and they came back with seventh place team under the 1200 Division. For only the second year in existence at the national level, they're doing an awesome job. May I introduce to you our United South and UISD National Qualifiers under the direction of Amido and Lucy Gutierrez. Congratulations. In our next category, we have the district champs for UIL Academics, United South High School. May I ask them to come in? We have teams that will be moving on to regionals under accounting, calculator apps, computer apps, current issues and events, mathematics, number sense, social studies, science, spelling and vocabulary, extemp speaking, and of course their one-act play moved on as well. Congratulations to our sponsors and our principals, our district champs and academics for this school year. Congratulations. As you can see, parents, it's very important that our children are competitive and they join the different extracurricular activities at all our schools. It just shows you what they can do within, they put their heart and mind into it. Our next group we want to go ahead and invite again is the Skills USA event. Congratulations to the coaches and administrators. These group of students qualified at the state competition in auto body repair, advertising display, internet working, computer project and display, state superior ratings across the board, and state qualifiers. Congratulations to our cake department. Again, Skills USA is an event that targets building workplace skills such as leadership, teamwork, citizen, and character development. Again, congratulations, United South High School, their administrators and teachers and students, and congratulations, parents, for having awesome kids that are representing our school district. Congratulations to all. Our next award, on March 7th, UISD hosted its 26th Annual Science Fair at the Bill Johnson Student Activity Complex. Over 200 UISD middle and high school students competed for awards in four categories and six levels. The high school grand champion trophy was won by Miguel Dominguez from Alexander High School for his project entitled "Spectrometry Applied." As this year's grand champion, Miguel Dominguez will represent UISD at the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair in Los Angeles, California on May 11 through 16. I invite the principals and their sponsors and teachers to come up. Congratulations to our UISD Science Fair winner, Miguel Dominguez. It seems like everybody's going to California, huh? Here we go, next person, John B. Alexander, high school student. Alexa M. Ramírez has advanced to UIL State Competition for her work in theatrical design and costuming. Her designs are based on Tofu, a theatrical comedy by Molière. The goals of the UIL Theoretical Design Contest are to foster appreciation of good theatrical design, to increase the number of schools which have adopted technical theater as their academic subject in school curriculum, and to satisfy the competitive artistic spirit with friendly competition among schools. Ms. Ramírez received an award of distinguished merit and will compete in May at the UIL Theoretical Design Competition at the University of Texas in Austin. Congratulations to our honoree, Alexa Ramírez and her parents. Congratulations, Bulldog Pride.
Our next recognition is for an individual performance in swimming. This year, sophomore Aisha Mohammed qualified for the state swim meet in Austin for the second year in a row. She is a sophomore. She's a defending champion in the 100 Fly and 200 Individual Medley. Congratulations, regional champion, state qualifier, Aisha Mohammed. In addition, we are recognizing tonight the Alexander Bulldog Regional Qualifier Swim Team. These dedicated swimmers advanced out of district and onto the regional meet in Brownsville. This is the largest contingent from Alexander High School to qualify. Congratulations, regional swimmers.
Mr. Santos and board members, I'd like to present John B. Alexander High School 29-5A Academic Group that's advancing now to UTSA for regionals. I invite the principals and the sponsors. We have winners in prose and poetry, informative speaking, persuasive speaking, current events, editorial writing, future writing, headline writing, ready writing, literary criticism, social studies, spelling vocabulary, and one-act play, honorable mention, all-star casts, and so forth. Congratulations to our UIL academic winners. Okay, congratulations, UIL winners representing Alexander High School. Our next group of students that we want to recognize is our Alexander High School Schools USA winners. Again, I invite our principals, our sponsors to come forward. Again, our Skills USA event targets building workplace skills such as leadership, teamwork, citizenship, and character development. We had Criminal Justice Quiz Bowl winners at state qualified competition, Emblem Ceremony State Qualified Competition, Crime Scene Investigation State Qualified Forensic Team, Felony Traffic Stop State Qualified Technical Tests, Skills USA Quiz Bowl, again, state qualified competition, Building Search State Qualified Technical Test, and Criminal Justice State Qualified Technical Test. Congratulations to our sponsors and Alexander High School.
This next group of young ladies had some heartache last year. Last year, they fell in the third round by one point. There was a crushing loss, and they vowed that this year, if they were in that position again, they would fix it. And this year, they did. Congratulations, Alexander Lady Bulldog Basketball Team for being the district champion, by-district champion, area champion, regional quarterfinal champion, and regional semifinalist Sweet 16 qualifier. Head coach Gilbert Cardenas, assistants Chris Alonso, Denise Munoz, and Terry Hancock. Congratulations, Alexander Lady Bulldog Basketball Team Regional Semifinalist Sweet 16. Our next team is also being recognized for a great run in the playoffs, where they finished as co-district champions, by-district champions, area champions, and regional as co-district champions, by-district champions, area champions, and regional quarterfinalists. Congratulations, Alexander Boys Basketball Team. Head coach, Luis Valdez; assistant coaches, Fernando Alfaro, Mike Salinas, and Daniel Ombraña. Before the guys leave the stage, I would like to recognize one young man, Yao Salinas. Can you raise your hand, please? Congratulations on being accepted and appointed to the United States Naval Academy.
Our next group is our UIL Events Group. Let's go ahead and bring them up, their administration and their coaches. UIL Academics is the heart and soul of the school. We're very proud of our students. These are the regional qualifiers, as well as the one-act play with their advancing. So here we go. First one, accounting. They're moving on accounting, current issues and events, computer applications, computer science, editorial writing, feature writing, mathematics, prose, science, spelling and current issues and events, computer applications, computer science, future writing, editorial writing, prose and science, top physics, and of course, the one-act play, which went ahead and advanced. Congratulations to our students and sponsors and administration. It's wonderful to see all these students participating and supporting their schools. Ladies and gentlemen, United High School's academic team, congratulations! They don't say cheese, they say trophy. Unless you flew over the cuckoo's nest, right? Our next category, again, Skills USA from United High School. We can have them move forward. Skills USA Advanced Targets Building Workplace Skills such as leadership, teamwork, citizen, and character development. We have winners. State Superior Rating for HVAC, Advertising Design, State of Texas Best of Show, State Superior, State Excellence in Advertising Design, Photography Panel, State Superior. United High School Graphics Art Chapter Name, Outstanding Leadership Chapter for District 12. Under Auto Mechanics, we have eighth-place team. Congratulations to our students and to the Cake Department for United High School. Again, there's something for everybody at school. We congratulate our students and United High School. Again, congratulations, United High School USA Skills Competitors. Congratulations. Our next group, our United High School Model United Nations Team, traveling all the way to New York under the direction of Kevin Crowell. Took 25 students and competed internationally and won two out of the six awards that are given at this competition. Again, congratulations to United High School and their students for our job well done. So again, we've been on the West Coast and the East Coast.
Congratulations. Our next recognition is for a girls' basketball team who made school history this year by becoming the first United High School girls' basketball team to advance to the third-round regional quarterfinals. These ladies finished up as by-district champions, area champions, and regional quarterfinalists. Congratulations, Lady Longhorns. Head coach, Ian Ward; assistant coaches, Erica Blake, Mary Tobias, and Brad Hopkins. Congratulations, Lady Longhorns, regional quarterfinalist. The boys' basketball team also had a great year, and tonight, they're being recognized for excellence in being in the playoffs yet again for the 15th time out of the last 16 years. Congratulations, United Longhorn Boys Basketball by-District finalist. Head coach, Archie Ramos; assistants, Leopoldo Guardiola, Doug Gates, and Jesse Herrera. Congratulations, United Longhorns Boys Basketball. Our final swim team that we'd like to recognize is a regional qualifying swim team from United High School. This is also the largest contingent that United High School has ever sent to the regional. Congratulations, swimmers. Head coach, Paul Kane; assistant coach, Marisa Gomez. Congratulations, United's regional qualifying swim team.
Okay. All right. Mr. Santos, Mr. Montemayor, members of the board, we're going to go ahead and combine FF and GG. It's the same department. Time to recognize the team that actually documents and films all the individuals that we recognize today, all the student athletes and all the participants. The ITV Board recognition tonight, we'd like to recognize the United ISD Instructional Television Department for winning four videographer awards. This award is an international video contest that is one of the oldest and most respected award programs in the video industry. The program is directed by communication professionals to honor talented individuals and companies in the television and video production field. This is the second year in a row that the ITV Department has won this prestigious award. This year's winning entries included the Migrant Astronaut, a public service announcement with the US astronaut José Hernández, and UISD migrant students, Award of Excellence; the UISD Student Newscast, Award of Distinction; Pass It To Kill Em Style Star Exam Music Video, Award of Distinction; and GUNS Public Safety Service Announcement with board member Judd Gilpin and his daughter Morgan Gilpin, Honorable Mention Award. That is the videographer award presentation. In addition, the UISD Instructional Television Department has been recognized tonight for the 48 video awards they received during the Texas Public School Relations Association Conference. For five years in a row, the United ITV Department has the distinction of winning more TESPA Awards than any other instructional television department in the state of Texas. United ITV competes in the largest division against school districts with student populations of 30,000 or more. This year, the United ITV staff was presented with a total of 48 awards, 20 Gold Star Awards, 12 Silver Star Awards, 15 Bronze Star Awards, and one Best in Show. The Gold Star Awards were UISD Growth Video, the UISD Board Appreciation, The Avengers, the UISD Call Me Maybe, and the UISD Special Olympics. A big round of applause for our ITV Department. Members of the department are Pete Martinez, photographer, Luis Garza, Joe Moreno, José Luis, Uicho Salinas, Robert Nino, Ana Prado, and our director, Susan Carlson. Thank you very much.
I have one more award. Mr. Santos, I have one more award. Last but not least, you all, last but not least. One more, one more. No, it's okay. Good evening, Mr. Santos, and members of the board, the remaining members of the audience. What a great problem to have, correct? All of the individual students who were named, the teams who were named, it's a full house, and it was a wonderful evening tonight. I'd like to introduce the members of my Communications and Public Relations Team who assisted and worked right now, taking the pictures and so forth. The UISD Communication Members honored with the professional awards. Each year, the Texas School Public Relations Association recognizes outstanding communications in school districts, education foundations, associations, organizations for their hard work in print and electronic media categories. There are 45 main categories covering various media events. Commendation Categories, or the Platinum Award category, are entered. This year, the UISD Communications Public Relations Team had an impressive showing as they collectively garnered 19 Gold Star Awards, 20 Silver Awards, 13 Bronze Awards, and one Crystal Certificate of Merits, as well as a Best of Showing. Ladies and gentlemen, please let me introduce my staff from the Communications and Public Relations Team. We have Rosio Moore, Communication Specialist, Alex Meyer, Paola Arcos, Carmen Rendon, and Ronnie Yunus, the Director of Public Relations. Let's give them a round of applause.
Again, congratulations to United High School and their students for our job well done. So again, we've been on the West Coast and the East Coast. Congratulations. becoming the first United High School girls' basketball team to advance to the third-round regional quarterfinals. These ladies finished up as bi-district champions, area champions, and regional quarterfinalists. Congratulations, Lady Longhorns. Head Coach, Ian Ward. Assistant Coaches, Erica Blake, Mary Tobias, and Brad Hopkins. Congratulations, Lady Longhorns, regional quarterfinalist. The boys' basketball team also had a great year, and tonight they're being recognized for excellence and being in the playoffs yet again for the 15th time out of the last 16 years. Congratulations, United Longhorn Boys Basketball Bi-District finalist. Head Coach, Archie Ramos. Assistants, Leopoldo Guardiola, Doug Gates, and Jesse Herrera. Congratulations, United Longhorns Boys Basketball. Our final swim team, that we'd like to recognize, is a regional qualifying swim team from United High School. Congratulations. This is also the largest contingent that United High School has ever sent to the regional. Congratulations, swimmers. Head Coach, Paul Kane. Assistant Coach, Marisa Gomez. Congratulations, United's regional qualifying swim team.
Okay. All right. Mr. Santos, Mr. Montemayor, members of the board, we're going to go ahead and combine FF and GG. It's the same department. Time to recognize the team that actually documents and films all of the individuals that we recognize today, all the student athletes and all the participants. The ITV Board recognition tonight, we'd like to recognize the United ISD Instructional Television Department for winning four videographer awards. This award is an international video contest that is one of the oldest and most respected award programs in the video industry. The program is directed by communication professionals to honor talented individuals and companies in the television and video production field. This is the second year in a row that the ITV Department has won this prestigious award. This year's winning entries included the Migrant Astronaut, a public service announcement with the US astronaut Jose Hernandez, and UIS migrant students, award of excellence; the UIS student newscast, award of distinction; Pass It To Kill Em style star exam music video, award of distinction; and Gunn's Public Safety Service Announcement with Board Member Judd Gilpin and his daughter Morgan Gilpin, honorable mention award. That is the videographer award presentation. In addition, the UIS Instructional Television Department has been recognized tonight for the 48 video awards they received during the Texas Public School Relations Association Conference. For five years in a row, the United ITV Department has a distinction of winning more TESPA awards than any other instructional television department in the state of Texas. United ITV competes in the largest division against school districts with student populations of 30,000 or more. This year, the United ITV staff was presented with a total of 48 awards, 20 Gold Star Awards, 12 Silver Star Awards, 15 Bronze Star Awards, and one Best in Show. The Gold Star Awards were UISD Growth Video, the UISD Board Appreciation, The Avengers, the UISD Call Me Maybe, and the UISD Special Olympics. A big round of applause for our ITV Department. Members of the department are Pete Martinez, photographer, Luis Garza, Joe Moreno, Jose Luis, Uicho Salinas, Robert Nino, Ana Prado, and our Director, Susan Carlson. Thank you very much.
I have one more award. Mr. Santos, I have one more award. Last but not least, you all, last but not least. One more, one more. No, it's okay. Good evening, Mr. Santos, members of the board, members, the remaining members of the audience. What a great problem to have, correct? All of the individual students who were named and the teams who were named, it's a full house, and it was a wonderful evening tonight. I'd like to introduce the members of my Communications and Public Relations Team, who assisted and worked right now, taking the pictures and so forth. The UISD Communication Members honored with the professional awards. Each year, the Texas School Public Relations Association recognizes outstanding communications in school districts, education foundations, associations, organizations for their hard work in print and electronic media categories. There are 45 main categories covering various media events. Commendation categories, or the Platinum Award category, are entered. This year, the UISD Communications Public Relations Team had an impressive showing as they collectively garnered 19 Gold Star Awards, 20 Silver Awards, 13 Bronze Awards, and one Crystal Certificate of Merit, as well as a Best of Showing. Ladies and gentlemen, please let me introduce my staff from the Communications and Public Relations Team. We have Rosio Moore, Communication Specialist, Alex Meyer, Paola Arcos, Carmen Rendon, and Ronnie Yunus, the Director of Public Relations. Let's give them a round of applause.
Are we ready? Okay, it is 7:23 PM, again, on the 15th day of April 2014. I call this meeting of the United Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Rodriguez is not here. Mr. Bedlis, would you assist in calling rovers?
Of course. Ms. Pat Campos.
Present.
Mr. Ricardo Molina.
Present.
Mr. Javier Montemayor.
Present.
And myself, Ramiro Bedlis. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Pledge, in a moment to settle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one individualism.
Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called. That notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Openshooting Act. Agenda item number three, public comments.
Here's time.
No public comments. Agenda item four, recognitions, we've already completed that. Agenda item number five, superintendent's report. A, review of legal policies in TASB, update 99.
Just an informational item for you all to review. These are legal policies. There's nothing, no action needed from the board.
Agenda item number six, at this time, we move on to the consent agenda items. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda items listed?
I move to approve consent agenda items A through J.
Then a motion to approve items A through J. Is there a second?
Second.
If I may, Mr. Montemayor, there's a couple of discretionary requests that I'd like to include with this consent agenda item. There's one that was submitted for LBJ High School, sponsored by Mr. Ramiro Bedlis for $3,000, and Mr. Ricardo Molina for $3,078.15 for Dan's team uniforms. And another one for United Middle School, requested by Rebecca Morales, sponsored by Mr. Javier Montemayor, is to purchase, for $1,100, to purchase a new refrigerator for teachers' lounge, and iPad for student awards.
With those additions, do we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuniga. Agenda item number seven, items for individual consideration. Item 7A, approval of the minutes for the month of March 2014.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 7B, approval of donations.
Yes, Mr. Montemayor, members of the board. It is recommended that the board trustees graciously accept the following donations, and they'll be attached to the minutes. We have two donations of over $1,000. United ISD Police Department K-9 Unit received a donation from Transportation Security Administration, TSA from San Antonio, of $10,000, which is K-9 A-Ron. Linden B Johnson High School received a donation from Toyota Laredo for $1,000. And then we have several smaller donations for grant toll this month of $12,250 that we graciously accept, and we thank these people for helping our campuses.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding the approval of donations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 7C, first reading of DH Local, employee standards of conduct.
That's not an action item. It'll be up for second reading at the next board meeting, as well as agenda item 7D as well.
Okay. Agenda item eight, closed session. The time is now 7:27 PM, and the board will adjourn into closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076, as of the Texas Government Code, to discuss agenda item eight, A, B, C, and D. We will be back in approximately one hour. Okay, item agenda nine, we are reconvened from closed session. The time is 9:13 PM. The board will take appropriate action on items if necessary to discuss in closed session.
Mr. Montemayor, members of the board, the recommendation as discussed in closed session is to approve the internal auditor's evaluation and place Ms. Martha Stoll in a three-year non-certified term contract as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item B, level three, grievance of Tomas Martinez.
Recommendation was not to take any action on the grievance of Tomas Martinez as discussed in closed session.
A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
And for the record, under DGPA Local, no action by the board at the next board meeting will uphold the administration's decision at level two. Recommendation on agenda item 9C is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase of a 3.06 acre tract located at the southeast corner of Alexander High School as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
And for the record, under DGPA Local, no action by the board at the next board meeting will uphold the administration's decision at level two. Recommendation on agenda item 9C is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase of a 3.06 acre tract located at the southeast corner of Alexander High School as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
And for the record, under DGPA Local, no action by the board at the next board meeting will uphold the administration's decision at level two. Recommendation on agenda item 9C is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase of a 3.06 acre tract located at the southeast corner of Alexander High School as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item 9D, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel to proceed with the amendment of the development agreement with EG Ranch, limited pertaining to the property located off Highway 359 south of City of Laredo Landfield as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9E, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase and sale pertaining to the property for sale at North House Incorporated pertaining to 8.9569 acres in the Quail Creek subdivision, City of Laredo, Webb County, Texas, as discussed in closed session.
A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9G, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel to proceed with legal action in regards to the development of a 54 acre tract of property lying next to and north of UISD property where the Foods Distribution Center and STEP Academy are located, and enforcement of a restrictive covenant to allow ingress and egress onto said property as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9H, the recommendation is to authorize contemplated litigation, including but not limited to, the acquisition of real estate through eminent domain proceedings or other legal options as allowed by law regarding the properties attached to the board agenda as described in the legal description.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9H, the recommendation is to authorize contemplative litigation, including but not limited to, the acquisition of real estate through eminent domain proceedings or other legal options as allowed by law regarding the properties attached to the board agenda as described in the legal description.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9G, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel to proceed with legal action in regards to the development of a 54 acre tract of property lying next to and north of UISD property where the Foods Distribution Center and STEP Academy are located, and enforcement of a restrictive covenant to allow ingress and egress onto said property as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9G, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel to proceed with legal action in regards to the development of a 54 acre tract of property lying next to and north of UISD property where the Foods Distribution Center and STEP Academy are located, and enforcement of a restrictive covenant to allow ingress and egress onto said property as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
And for the record, under DGPA Local, no action by the board at the next board meeting will uphold the administration's decision at level two. Recommendation on agenda item 9C is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase of a 3.06 acre tract located at the southeast corner of Alexander High School as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
And for the record, under DGPA Local, no action by the board at the next board meeting will uphold the administration's decision at level two. Recommendation on agenda item 9C is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase of a 3.06 acre tract located at the southeast corner of Alexander High School as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item 9D, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel to proceed with the amendment of the development agreement with EG Ranch, limited pertaining to the property located off Highway 359 south of City of Laredo Landfield as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9E, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase and sale pertaining to the property for sale at North House Incorporated pertaining to 8.9569 acres in the Quail Creek subdivision, City of Laredo, Webb County, Texas, as discussed in closed session.
A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9G, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel to proceed with legal action in regards to the development of a 54 acre tract of property lying next to and north of UISD property where the Foods Distribution Center and STEP Academy are located, and enforcement of a restrictive covenant to allow ingress and egress onto said property as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9H, the recommendation is to authorize contemplated litigation, including but not limited to, the acquisition of real estate through eminent domain proceedings or other legal options as allowed by law regarding the properties attached to the board agenda as described in the legal description.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9E, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase and sale pertaining to the property for sale at North House Incorporated pertaining to 8.9569 acres in the Quail Creek subdivision, City of Laredo, Webb County, Texas, as discussed in closed session.
A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
And agenda item 9F, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase of a 12 acre tract in Las Lomas del Sur subdivision from Daniel Wires as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
And agenda item 9F, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel and administration to negotiate the purchase of a 12 acre tract in Las Lomas del Sur subdivision from Daniel Wires as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9G, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel to proceed with legal action in regards to the development of a 54 acre tract of property lying next to and north of UISD property where the Foods Distribution Center and STEP Academy are located, and enforcement of a restrictive covenant to allow ingress and egress onto said property as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9H, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel to proceed with legal action in regards to the development of a 54 acre tract of property lying next to and north of UISD property where the Foods Distribution Center and STEP Academy are located, and enforcement of a restrictive covenant to allow ingress and egress onto said property as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9G, the recommendation is to authorize legal counsel to proceed with legal action in regards to the development of a 54 acre tract of property lying next to and north of UISD property where the Foods Distribution Center and STEP Academy are located, and enforcement of a restrictive covenant to allow ingress and egress onto said property as discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Agenda item 9H, the recommendation is to authorize contemplated litigation, including but not limited to, the acquisition of real estate through eminent domain proceedings or other legal options as allowed by law regarding the properties attached to the board agenda as described in the legal description.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
And agenda item 10, adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
No, there's no question.
We're adjourned.[1735.41]